Mission to order and we have one topic on the agenda. And I will turn it over to Laura Smith to introduce it for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we have a continued discussion on our street program that we've been working on for quite some time, but really in earnest with you all in the last couple of months. So I am going to share the screen. We've got a PowerPoint presentation which I sent to you all just a few minutes ago. And then Audrey has also updated that on the website. So it's it's already out there in the packet. And so let me do this and Okay, so Celia and I this evening are going to sort of walk through a very quick recap of some of the things that we discussed in our September presentation. Those were also detailed and outlined in the discussion item summary that was in your packet. Celia and Brett have done some work on a revised 10 year scenario. So in September, we looked at kind of a proposed 10 year residential street plan. They've made some updates to that based on our conversations in September. And then Celia will also share some additional information on stormwater as it relates to reconstruction and street projects. We will also share some information. You're all familiar that we typically do a five year cars or county assisted road system planning document. We felt as if after confirming with you all last month that you would kind of like to see us build out kind of separate programs or at least track a little bit more separately. Residential street maintenance and arterial maintenance, which is covered through the cars program. So we went back and have worked to build out a 10 year cars program. We won't spend time tonight talking about the specific projects included in that, just more generally to sort of start to add the context from a budget, more of a budgetary perspective. Celia will talk about planning for the 2021 and 2022 projects and kind of what direction we would be seeking from you all on that. And then I've got several pieces of information as we kind of start to dive into potential financing options and considerations. As we move this street program forward, and then we'll also talk about kind of next steps and potentially our next work session. So I'm going to turn it over to Celia. You're going to see some slides this evening that look very familiar. Part of what we're trying to do is create some sense of continuity. So that as particularly members of the public may join us at various points along this journey in this conversation, that there will be some consistency and helping to provide a frame of reference. So there will be several slides which we've covered in detail in previous meetings and Celia will just kind of move through those very quickly.
Thank you, Laura. So feel free to ask questions as we go, or you can ask them in the end. I will go pretty quickly, as Laura said, through the recap, but always time for questions if you have them. So we have 89.3 lane miles in the city and they're broken down into arterials, collectors and locals or residential. Next slide. Okay, this map, we thought it was important to show you what work was done since the last sales tax was improved in 2011. And so you have this map in your package and it's a little hard to read on the screen, but it shows each year what work was done. We did a lot of seal treatments. The goal was to touch the majority of residential streets throughout the city. So while not every street was touched, a majority was. We focused on seal treatments and those were to prevent moisture or water getting into the street and seeping down into the subgrade and then causing potholes and more base repair. So that really extended the pavement life. In 2014, the city went to a chip seal, which performed the same seal treatment, but also provided a little more structural integrity. As you know, with the chip seal, sometimes depending on the workmanship, it may be a little bit rough if the oil doesn't go down easily easily or evenly, but it does help protect the street. And then we also did some mill and overlays, which really improves the structural integrity of the street. Now, one of the most important things that we discovered over this last period was that I guess we went to do some mill and overlays and they milled off the pavement and found that there was dirt. And so we couldn't really do an overlay on these streets. And so the city hired Olson over, I think it was about a seven year period to collect core samples of the pavement to determine how much asphalt we had in the pavement. And we found that about three quarters of the streets don't have sufficient asphalt pavement requiring full depth reconstruction. Now that's going to make a difference in our next 10 year program. We're not going to be able to do as much work, but if we can fix, you know, the base and provide appropriate pavement depth for the traffic loading, then once we, you know, take care of that, it's going to be less expensive to maintain as we go along. So this is just a picture of the cars programs that we we did over that period too. The most expensive being the Johnson Drive project. We added stormwater interceptor under the road. We added street lights. I think we did ADA and sidewalks and I believe we did some on street parking. So that was one of the more expensive cars projects that we did, but we did a number of the streets during the 2011 to 2018 period as well. This is a recap that just shows that our overall pavement condition index is a 56.1, which correlates to a fair. As you can see, the majority of our streets, the highest percentage are very poor. And this is based on pavement condition index data collected by Stan Tech in 2017. So as you need, as you already know, our streets need a little work to improve the PCI condition. You've seen these maps before as well. So based on the PCI data collected by Stan Tech, the map on the left shows, you know, each street and what the rating is, and we take those pavement conditions as long as well as the asphalt boring data to determine what kind of street treatments we want to do and prioritize our streets. So the map on the left shows some of the treatments. We're really focusing on, you know, the good or new streets, we do nothing. And then the satisfactory, we're doing the crack fill, which our street crews are doing. And then we've recommended chip seal or U-Bass in our local or residential scenario. And I think we still probably need to come back and talk about the chip seal a little bit more, whether we want to do that. It's an inexpensive treatment. But as you know, looking at some of our streets with the workmanship, sometimes if they don't get the oil down, you know, the chips don't get coated properly. So that's something I think we need to revisit. But we did recommend that for some of the streets, just because it's a effective but less expensive option. And then for the arterials, you know, we have the option to do the U-Bass or the mill and overlay. We recently did the U-Bass on Lamar and it turned out really well. So I think the mill and overlay is a little more expensive. It'll last a little bit longer. So depending on the condition of the street, or if we're doing a joint project with another city that prefers a certain treatment, you know, we have those options. The majority of the streets, as I said, show the remove and replace asphalt with full base repair. And that's really due to the lack of asphalt thickness. And so those are the heavy red lines. And so that's that's a lot of work that we're going to need to be focusing on in the next 10 years, 10 year interval. This slide was seen shown before, and based on those types of treatments, we have a cost for the streets as well as curb sidewalk and ramps, which were estimates based on Stan Tech condition data. So it's a total of $39.2 million. It's that number is overwhelming, but when you think about just trying to break it down and doing what you can every year, we don't need $39 million today. Let's kind of break it down and slowly work towards improving our streets. And, you know, then it becomes a little more easy to do. But street maintenance is just like anything else, as I've said before, maintaining your house or your car. You can't just fix it and walk away. You have to continually do treatments and pavement and crack seal and things like that. So that's always important to realize that's an ongoing expense. So you've seen this slide before as well. We talked about it in our last work session about the cost benefit program generated scenario by Stan Tech. And really what we were looking at is the computer generates, okay, pick these streets, pick the longest road segments, the highest traffic volume, the less expensive treatments. And you're going to see the highest pavement condition index increase over a 10 year period. Now, this really doesn't work for us because the program says, you know, go do all the arterials. Well, we really can't do that because we're focusing on leveraging our funding with the county and they pay for 50% for arterial. So that option, while it makes the PCI go up really high, you know, it's really not feasible for us if we want to leverage outside funding. So we really focused on a local street scenario. I believe the consensus of the council was to, you know, let's really focus on our residential streets and let's have a separate arterial funding so that we can focus on both. And so we presented that last time. So what it does, it focuses on the local streets with the lowest PCIs for the first 10 years. And although we're not going to be able to touch as many streets as we did in the last 10 years, we're fixing it right. So it's going to be less costly maintenance over time. But it begins to address our backlog. And I think this scenario aligns more likely with a resident perception or expectations. As I talked about last time, if we, you know, while it's always good to go maintain the good streets so they don't drop low down into the poor category, also a lot of residents, you know, will wonder, why are you doing this good street when look at my street? So I think this scenario could potentially align up with perceptions. The slide on the left was what was presented in the September work session. And what we did is we we went down the list of streets and I gave you the big spreadsheet that showed each street, the proposed treatment, the PCI and, you know, the general costs for each type of project for each street. And so going down that list, we started to map out, you know, what streets could be done and kind of prioritize them through the years by the PCI. So the earlier projects have a lower PCI than the later projects. We also grouped some streets together and we tried to look at stormwater, which streets could be done first? And we put all that on paper. We also focused on streets that were what we're calling collectors, residential or commercial. So they carry, they carry a higher traffic volume. So that was one of the focuses too. So that was presented to you in September. And then Brett and I drove every street after that and took a look at the map and the PCIs to make sure that what was in the field really was what the PCI was on paper. And we did find some differences. And that's due to, you know, with the PCI data collected in 2017. Well, there's always degradation on streets, especially during the winter and some streets degrade more than others. So you may have a street look really good. And then the net, you know, over the winter it goes, you know, it it goes bad and a lot, you know, a lot more potholes and really deteriorates. So we drove the streets and you can see the map where we added, added some streets and took away some streets. So I won't go into each one, but really 51st West of Lamar. You know, originally we were hoping that that can be reclassified as a cars arterial, arterial street so that we can get 50% funding. 51st East of Lamar is. And so I think with the traffic volumes, if we can get 5,000 vehicles per day, we're going to be able to reclassify that and and be eligible for funding. And I think we can do that right now is not a good time with COVID. So that's something that we wanted to add on this program because the the street condition is pretty poor. And hopefully we can, you know, reclassify that later. We also added Lincolnshire. And I know one of the residences on and so well aware that those streets need improvements. And then 55th Street West of Lamar, typically what we found is the streets west of Lamar looked in a little better condition. But the pavement on the edges is really starting to crack. And so we wanted to add that street. We also added 61st Street East of Woodson. And that's our boulevard street with the trees down the middle. And I know we talked to council member Davis about saving those trees. But we added that street because there's a lot of pavement cracking in certain areas. And that will be a challenge to design and try to save trees and do all that. But I think that's a project that will be worthy. That's currently in the six to 10 year. And I just wanted to remind you that this is an ongoing flexible program. So we're really going to keep an eye on the streets. And some streets may move up and some may move back, just depending on, you know, like I said, how they degrade over time. But we feel pretty good that this, these streets identified are, you know, what's really needed. Now, I wanted to talk to you quickly as Laura alluded to is we're looking for your input on potentially beginning design on our 2021, 2022 projects. We have about $1.1 million in the budget and we'd like to begin design to bring you a contract back for consideration in December. And primarily, we'd like to do that because we'd like to bid the 2021 projects in the spring. And the earlier you bid it, the contractors don't have all their work lined up. They're going to give you better prices. And that way we can make sure we get work done in 2021. And then typically it's nice to design for the year before for, you know, the next year's project. So we're ready to go on that too. So with the $1.1 million scenario, that would include design in 21 and 22. It would include inspection, contingency and the projects. And the way the 2021 projects were selected is because we didn't have as much time for design. We looked at projects that didn't need quite as much stormwater work. And also projects that were more of a U-Bass treatment, so not a full depth reconstruction, so that they were, you know, a little less expensive and easier to design and get going. So that's how the 2021 projects were picked. And then following that, we kind of went down the list and picked, you know, the worst PCIs for 2022, excuse me. So just kind of looking for your consensus, would you be comfortable if we brought back a design contract in those two years? And just as a reminder, we can't really do 2023 yet until we know if a sales tax is passed. So we're really kind of looking at, you know, those two years.
Celia, that seems reasonable. The one thing that I'd like you to speak to at some point is the issue of staging. Because I recall the 2011 project that was done in our community and they also did the Knoll refurbishing of Knoll north of Shawnee Michigan Parkway. But the problem was that they did the residential first. And then they did the Knoll project and had trucks staged along the the site where they had just done the residential repairs. And that really messed up the the work that they had originally done. So it was really short sighted in terms of staging. And I think it's going to be important to look at what is the coordination of staging between the work on the locals and the work on the arterials.
And I know you brought that up before, and that's a good point. And I think that we can definitely take a look at that and potentially put in some contract language in there so that we make sure that that's addressed for this next round of street projects.
Thank you.
Yeah, if we did it the design work now, or this might be a question for Laura too, would that allow us for any flexibility if the sales tax revenue comes back better than our initial estimates? And we wanted to put more funding towards our streets or will we be kind of locked in for those two years?
Well, I think it's as much just a kind of capacity initially to, you know, to try to get, and we'll touch more when we get towards the end of tonight's conversation around the financing and potential timing of that. I think that, you know, Celia's objective, and I think it's it's absolutely the right one. And it echoes what I think we've heard you all say for quite a while. And that is let's get out there and start working on some streets, right? And so, so I think this plan and what she's selected for 2021 and 2022, and it's a little bit difficult to see. So the map on the left that we're looking at will need some additional refinement because you'll notice that we basically put 2022 and 20 through 2025 all in the same color. So we we need to, what we didn't want to do last month was get lost in kind of the weeds of, you know, which street is where? We wanted to show at a much higher level kind of which which half of a 10 year program, the streets would would sort of fall into. So we'll be going back and refining and, you know, assigning a specific year to each of these. But I don't think that we limit ourselves from a financial standpoint, we can certain, you know, and I think, you know, what we'll see, and I've got some CIP scenarios that we'll run through later. You know, we want to also maintain a little bit of flexibility, you know, for curb repair and some of those things that that just pop up. So I don't feel like this keeps us from making good forward progress.
Yeah, no, sounds good.
The other thing I wanted to just mention that I forgot to say is that if we can begin designing 2022 early, we want to apply for SMAC funding for stormwater. So that's due in May. So if we can design the year before, then we know what projects we're submitting for stormwater. So we're more likely to get funding too.
Celia, I had a question. The, so it looks like for 2021, just specifically regarding Ward 1, not much on the table for from the residential program perspective. But is there thought in the beginning of 2022 or the like specifically with those areas up there with Woodson and kind of that northeast border with Roland Park? As I recall, we have some stormwater area up there too. Is there thought to sort of have a bigger footprint between those two programs? Like in 2022, for example? So it fall towards the latter end of that five year?
So I had, I I've tentatively identified projects for each year, but like Laura said, we wanted to kind of be open and not just set in stone. So what I had identified based on the pavement conditions was 62nd Woodson to Lamar in Countryside. That's one of our worst streets condition. And then up in your area, Reed's Road, 49th to 51st, Outlook, 49th to 51st. And then Beverly Avenue, 56th to 57th Street. And so yes, there would be work up in those areas and, you know, Reed's and Outlook are in, well, all of them are, all of those identified are in poor condition, but those what I identified for 2022.
Got it. Yeah. And those those sync too. I said Woodson, but those those two were kind of what I was really thinking.
Yeah.
Celia.
It's Debbie. Could I ask you just a quick question? Several times we've looked at things where there's insufficient, whether it be the fill beneath or how many, what the inches in depth should be versus what they currently are. We had that on one of, on my residential street where you came out and looked at the Wagner's property and you said, well, it wasn't, it wasn't done right. How can we get assurance? Now, I'm not blaming or pointing fingers at you or contracts or anybody. How can we get assurance that it's done right, the right time? And that some of these failures or poor conditions are based on what was put there before that shouldn't have been done?
Well, we will have an inspector out there and I think there's a little more oversight nowadays. You know, we'll have an inspector and we take materials, tickets. So we're taking a look at all of that while it's being performed in the field. And so we'll have eyes on and be able to, you know, and and we can't pay them unless we see the quantities as well. So kind of like the Lamar project, you know, we've got complete oversight on the on those items, looking at all that.
I think the other thing too, Celia, and I can't remember where we put it in the budget, but I think we had addressed some resources to get formal street specifications done. Yes. Right. And so that is, that is the long term, big picture answer to your, to your question, Debbie, about, you know, we need to start with the right plan specifications that are being provided to the contractor. And then those eyes in the field, once we get to construction. It's kind of, you know, another check and balance. But we we did, council did approve funding to move forward with with those street specifications.
Thank you. Just a little plug. I was going to say, if we had a little bit money left at the beginning of the year, I was going to recommend that. Now, we do design for our streets. We do design to Overland Park standards right now. But yes, if we can adopt those standards for everybody, you know, that's going to make it a little easier. And one thing I forgot in the 2022, we also had Riggs Road from 53rd Street to the Dead End. So we're trying to, you know, touch streets throughout the city, but also focus on the worst streets. Okay, so this is a recommended.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. Could I, could I comment really quick before you move on? Is that okay? Thank you. Um, you know, as you were looking for consensus about 21 and 22, I definitely want to see us get work going underway for 21 as quickly as possible. I think that's so important. But 22 for me, I feel like I really want to see our entire, you know, plan more solidified and our funding structure generally designed before we start committing to 22. And I know that, you know, this plan will be fluid. But at the same time, I, in terms of what we present to the public, I really want to see a schedule. I want to see, you know, something that folks can go to the website, you know, see what's coming up next year as best as we can design it and not, you know, risk saying, but it could change, you know? And I know we're not, that's not necessarily what we're saying, but I guess I just want a little bit more design before we commit to over a year from now.
So what we could do is we could authorize the 2021, maybe, you know, present that in December and then come back. And by that time, hopefully, you know, we will have figured out budgets and things and then come back early in the year and do the 2022. Or even mid year, we could do 2022, as long as we know what stormwater to apply for. So we could still accommodate getting work done, but delay the 2022 design a little bit if that would make people feel more comfortable.
That's just me. I, that may not be everyone on council, but my thoughts.
Okay.
Celia, I, I think that if we, if we really want to get something into SMAC for, you know, for funding, we need to have you determine what the timeline is for that so that we do get it in early enough. And before May, when you have to submit. So that would be my caveat that whatever is going to be done is really going to be done with the idea of targeting an adequate time for application for SMAC for stormwater.
Yeah, I would share that concern about delaying 2022. I definitely see what Hillary is saying about money, coherent program. But I think at least if we could work on that piece where we would also be doing stormwater, that that would be helpful to get out in front of that.
Well, I think what we can do, and I think will be helpful is is we can bring back those specific streets in 2022 because I think you'll, I I'm hopeful that you would have a greater comfort level in seeing that. I mean, as we've talked about before, there's no dollars that we're going to spend anywhere on our streets that will be a bad investment. But I think that part of the projects that that Celia has identified for 2022 also do a really good job of leveraging the SMAC dollars, but sort of giving us that opportunity to to test some of our policy and and decision making around the installation of stormwater. And so I think they tackle some, both from a pavement condition and and potentially a stormwater. I think the 2022 projects address some longstanding or longer standing concerns that have have been out there. So we can certainly at least get that portion refined and in a little more detail as as we move that forward. And again, I think our biggest concern is making sure that we don't getting started and getting into the rhythm of the street maintenance program is going to be a little bit, you know, stop and go in this first year or first 18 months as we, as we align all of the, you know, our funding cycle, our budget cycles, potential elections and deadlines for SMAC and cars funding. So we'll, we'll hit our stride. It may not feel like it in the first couple of years.
Laura, it's Debbie. Do you know currently what the total cars budget is for 2021?
You mean how much funding the county has available for all the cities?
Correct.
Celia, I think you probably know better than I do, but it's generally, I think somewhere in the neighborhood of 13 or 14 million.
I wanted to say 7. Wanted to say 17, but it's it's somewhere in that neighborhood. Now, we don't have a cars project for 2021.
Okay.
So this was. Our first stab at taking a recommended 2010 year cars program. So what it does, it shows the projects. That we showed you in May from 2021 to 2025. And then I took a look at, you know, the projects we done before. I looked at the pavement conditions and tried to prioritize projects. Based on that through the next five years. And then also working with the other cities, you know, Prairie Village has contacted us saying, you know, we really want a joint project for 63rd Street. So. They'd like to submit that in 2025. So I included that on there. Also. We had a project. So we submitted our row project. You saw on the spreadsheet that we submitted to you in May in 2024, but then there's the shared piece that. Fairway is going to apply for. So we just pay a portion of that. So those are all included on there. So this is a very robust program. You know, it's really important for to maintain our local streets, but it's also important to maintain our arterials because. You know, the most traffic drives on those arterials, plus we get the 50% funding, which is why Johnson County gives us that because they prioritize arterials. So. We've got, you know, the Johnson Johnson County West of Lamar, Johnson Drive, West of Lamar project was just really expensive. And so, you know, there's some hard decisions to be made, but this was our first attempt just for budget scenarios to see, you know, what we could do and what funding it would cost. So we have been talking about stormwater and providing you with more information each work session, and I know that. These graphs are small, but I just kind of wanted to update you on where we are on that. Last time we looked overall at different approaches for stormwater. Stormwater is really important as part of a street. Just because water in the street, you know, really deteriorates that water is not a friend of pavement. We always like to say, so it's important to incorporate it. And it's a lot less expensive if you can put the stormwater in while you're doing a street, because then you don't have to pay, you know. Some of the restoration and curb parts that you would be doing anyway. So. We talked about the repair approach versus the minimal improvement versus APWA, which is what you APWA is most stringent, which is what you would use on a new street. And I believe there was consensus on what we're calling minimal improvement, which is. Appropriate for a retrofit street where we wouldn't automatically just put in, you know, all new stormwater, but we take a look at existing conditions and I try to address those. And so that's kind of what we landed on last time. So. This exercise was to really start looking at what are our stormwater costs? And we're not quite settled on a budget for stormwater yet. And I know Laura is going to go into that a little bit more, but trying to figure out. Can we replace? Three, four and five rated pipe, or can we only replace the fours and fives? And so what those ratings are is, you know, you approved a contract with BHC. Earlier this year to go in and inspect all of our pipe and the county developed a system so that any pipe of 3.1 and higher would be eligible for funding. You have to submit projects and they have to have, you know, the funding for it, but they'll pay for that. So that's why it was important to take a look at it. And so BHC has finished the ratings. We're submitting a report to you in December. And then what happens is those ratings are kicked to the county. The county does an algorithm. Based on consequence of failure, like is it on a an arterial? What's the age? What's the condition? And so we don't know some of these three rated, whether they'll be 3.1 and eligible for funding or not, but we wanted to take a look at what the cost would be. So. For 2021, you can see, okay, so let me go to the graph first. So what they did is for 2021, they showed a graph graphic for each project, and that shows the blue. And I know it's difficult to read, but then they looked at the stormwater pipe and they showed. The threes in a yellow color and the fours in an orange and the reds in a five. So we got an idea of what really it would cost for each year. So. 2021, you can see, I think it's, I can't see with. The graphic, but I think it's $184,000. So 2021 is. You know, reasonable and we could afford that. And then 2022. Has some of the projects like the Outlook project up north of town that we just talked about that would require minimal improvements to dress. Water that just dumps onto the tree on the street. So that would be a little more expensive. So. We haven't determined yet whether we have the money to be able to do the 3.1s, fours and fives. I have a feeling that once all this goes to the county. We're we're probably not going to be able to replace all the threes, and we're probably going to have to focus on the fours and fives, but. Just wanted to show you this to show that we're continuing to look at what stormwater costs are and trying to develop, you know, what can we replace with street projects? And now it's on to Laura.
Sorry, we kind of get, I, you know, I'm muted. And before we get on to kind of the budget and financing piece, does anybody have any? More construction technical type questions? You want to talk about with Celia? Okay, so Celia and Brent have obviously been spending a lot of time working on the maps and coordinating and. Looking at how we stretch and and design and construct the projects in a fair, balanced and efficient manner. And I've been spending time looking at kind of. Some conversations and information around budget finance. How do we pay for all of this? So one of the things that we've talked about in the last couple of months has been kind of creating. I've listed it here as a separate funding program, but at least in our initial conversations, breaking out and taking a look. At a more granular level at our residential streets and our cars or arterial streets. We blend them and we've historically blended them in our five year capital improvement program. So it's kind of hard to get that sense and that that picture of. What are we really spending? On in each of those categories. So when we look at the 10 year programs that we've been talking about so far this evening. At about a $2 million scenario a year, obviously, we're looking at. About $20 million in residential street work. And then the the 10 million or the the 10 year cars program that that table that was included in your packet. Totals about another $20 million in cars projects. The one big sort of. Caveat to all of this is. None of these conversations at this point account for the major reconstruction of Johnson Drive from Lamar to Metcalf that's been contemplated. We know there are some outside funding dollars that we would pursue. We've had some conversations around that, but that is. Excuse me, in and of itself about a 12. It's over a $12 million project. So I think that we wanted to make some progress on this front. I think Celia is doing some. Getting herself up to speed on some of the design components. For that street so that we can really then talk about options. For that section of Johnson Drive, certainly the pavement and that street does need some attention through that section. And then, so we've been working on sort of creating separate funding programs for those. And then evaluating different funding scenarios, whether that's revenue generation, debt financing options. And other things to kind of accomplish the goals and objectives. So. Tonight, we're going to focus a little bit more on what are what are those separate funding programs kind of look like? And then we're going to talk specifically about sales tax. We can, we can touch on some of the other revenue generation opportunities that we have, but I think sales taxes. Kind of our primary focus because the current street sales tax is set to sunset in March of 2022. So when we look at, and we talked a little bit about this in September, the current revenues that are available for streets right now. We have the seven general fund mills that we dedicate, we levy that that in the general fund, and then we transfer that to the capital improvement fund. That at this point is generating about $1.1 million for street maintenance annually. We also have the quarter cent sales tax that's dedicated to streets. And that. Was it had a 10 year sunset period on it was adopted in 2012. And as I just mentioned, will sunset in March of 2022. This is a conservative estimate, so we always like to to do that when. When we're going gangbusters and sales tax, you will generate over $600,000 a year with this. But that 580 is probably. A more realistic number on an annual basis. And then we do have the special highway allocation or a portion of the gas tax revenues. That are distributed to us from the state. And that totals about $225,000 each year. So you can see that where we sit today. In the things between the things that that we have control over the mill and to a certain extent, our own dedicated sales tax. And those funds that come from the state. We're pretty close to that 2 million, you know, generating $2 million a year for a street program. Needs. And so the big question is then what can we accomplish? With the current revenues and then do we want to enhance those revenues going forward?
Laura, could I ask you just a quick question? Is there any way you could give us a snapshot? For the current year as to what are like bigger companies like Hy-Vee, Target and all those have generated in sales tax to date?
No, because I can't tell you specifically by business. What they're generating. What we can do is. The best kind of the best place to go look at that is there's a table in the comprehensive annual financial report. That breaks down sales tax generation by kind of general business categories.
Okay.
And we can certainly share that. I don't have a CAFRA right here in front of me, but. It will show you and it will give you a 10 year history of that. And we're we're going to talk as we kind of move through some of the other considerations when we think about sales tax funding. About some of those cat, you know, those categories and. Impacts that things like, you know, eliminating sales tax on food might do to the stability of a, you know. Sales tax budget or or capital program built on those kinds of revenues.
Okay, appreciate it.
So currently our sales tax rate in Mission is 9.6%. So of that 9.6%, 6.5 is. The state, the state sales tax. 1.475 is Johnson County's. And then in Mission's sales tax, that's our sales tax is broken out. For with a 1% general sales tax. And then a quarter cent street sales tax. The and a 3.8 cent Parks and Recreation sales tax. It's important to note that in the Mission Crossing Cornerstone Commons and Gateway Projects, there is an additional 1% that is or will be levied. As a result of an overlay of community improvement districts. On those sites. When we think about sales tax, technically our statutory capacity for sales tax as as a city is 3% and I've included the. The sites here, if anybody's. Really wants to go look at all of that specific language, but. Up to 2% of that 3% can be. Levied or collected for general purposes and up to 1% for special purposes. The statute's a little bit vague. And I. Can share in conversations with Gilmore and Bell. I think there's an attorney general's opinion that provides some additional clarification on that. Which which we'll share in some of our follow up materials, but I, you know, right now we're looking at, we've got. Basically 50% of that general purpose capacity. And then we do have about another 3.8 cent. When we look at our capacity for special purposes. So one of the things that makes those tax attractive. When we're talking about financing, and I think particularly as we talk about financing streets, is that is a revenue source that's paid by both Mission residents and those. Purchasing goods and services in our city. So people who are impacting our streets, driving to our businesses. Are contributing to that as well. So the the state puts out a report. That estimates what they refer to as the pull factor or sort of how much of that estimated sales tax is being paid or collected from people that are non residents of the city of Mission. And so currently. The 2019 data from the state would suggest that our the sales tax generated by non residents. Is about 43% of our total sales tax that is collected. Comparatively, you may have noticed in if you looked at the sort of campaign. Materials or materials for the city of Mariam's sales tax and the city of Roland Park sales tax. Ballot issues that they have considered recently. Pull factor in Mariam is about 80% and pull factor in the city of Roland Park is about 24%. So you can kind of, you know, just on an overarching basis, look at the types of businesses and it's fairly intuitive that. We're drawing people in to shop at our target and our Hy-Vee and, you know, some of those other businesses.
Laura.
Uh huh.
Is it possible to to give us a table that shows our immediate surrounding? Cities and their sales tax compared to ours?
Yes. And I can tell you just off the top of my head that, for example, Roland Park's sales tax is 9.225%. Mariam's is 9.475% currently. So we can certainly. Put together that table and let you look at that. There's there's in conversations over the years, there tends to be sort of a. Mental, if you will, sort of block or aversion to looking at sales tax rates that go much above 10%. And so it's always an important thing to sort of. Consider and and talk about. Again, I think if as we're building a financing. Plan and program for whether it's streets or parks or anything else, really. I think we do want to think about. Where are our sales tax revenues generated? Because as I mentioned just a few minutes ago, oftentimes there is legislation that's introduced. Year after year that pursues exemption of certain goods and services from, you know, from paying sales tax. And that certainly. Would have the largest and most frequent of those is is often food and that would have a very significant impact on. Our city budget. So when we think about, I mean, we've kind of been talking about sales tax renewal, and I guess that fundamentally, when we get to that point is. You know, is the basic question about is renewal of the sales tax? The the method or does that method of financing make sense for us? I think you see that. We, as a city, have renewed a sales tax in the past. And in fact, the street sales tax. Was the renewal of a quarter cent sales tax that had originally been levied. For expansion of the community center. You see, and I shared some information in the packet about the sales tax campaign. So Mariam recently renewed a sales tax. Roland Park currently has a sales tax renewal along with an increase in the amount of sales tax to be levied. On the ballot for November 3. So these are all. Questions and specific considerations. And in a minute, I'll pull up some spreadsheets and show you kind of preliminarily some of the things that we've. Tinkered with around different different sales tax rates and those kinds of things. But when you look at, so if we decide that a sales tax renewal is something that we definitely want to pursue, and that's. Generally been the focus of our conversation. There are two ways to do that. One is through a mail ballot election and the other is to time that with another scheduled election. In Mission for the current street sales tax and the Parks and Recreation sales tax. Both of those taxes were presented on mail ballots. And. It it's interesting to see 10 years later, what the what a sales tax renewal informational. It's not fair. I hate to call it a campaign because we're able to provide information. But it obviously looks very different. We had, we had some public meetings and we did, we published a four page newsletter that went to all the residents in Mission, and that was about the extent of. Kind of how we publicized and engaged the public in that mail ballot election. If you decide regardless of how you're going to put the question out to your voters. The kind of just the general step. The kind of just the general steps in putting a question on the ballot. Include the council having to adopt a resolution to call the election. We published notice of that election. Obviously, the voters would approve or consider if they approve on that election date. Then the council passes a follow-up ordinance that actually levies the sales tax. And then we send all of those proceedings to the Kansas Department of Revenue to begin levying the sales tax. And. All of that has to be completed in order for a new sales tax to become effective. That all has to be communicated to the state. The quarter before the sales tax is set to expire. So we need to. The the last day to renew a street sales tax to have no lapse in in our collection would be December of two thousand and twenty-one. There's much more detailed schedule that our bond council has provided. And again, I'm happy to share and follow-up materials. Most of it. Is more informational for the city clerk in terms of who and when we file various documents with. As I mentioned before, you can increase or decrease. The current rate for either one of our sales tax. So I think one of the things that we're we'll want to. Look at in concert is, you know, do we want to continue to levy the same rates? Do we want to increase one? Decrease another. So our total rate is the same. Do we want to take advantage of some of that remaining capacity? That we have in our special purpose. Sales taxes. Let me, I'm gonna go back and then I'm gonna stop sharing and I'm gonna go grab another document.
In terms of response rate, do you think it's. Especially now easier to do it by mail ballot in in terms of trying to get response rate. Versus to have it timed with a scheduled election?
I think it is. I think the concern has been, and you know, I I don't know, I have not talked with Roland Park about. Kind of their decision or rationale in. In going on the November second ballot. Uh, oftentimes, I mean, the the benefit of of going on with a regularly scheduled election is it's. No cost, often no cost to the city to conduct that election. A mail ballot, you're probably going to spend somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen. Just maybe seventeen thousand dollars to conduct that election. So there's a a financial consideration to be given there. Part of it, though, is timing. You know, obviously, we're gonna want to, you know, we may want to have that sales tax renewed before we. I just lost my train of thought. We want to have it renewed in in a time that doesn't line up with the kind of election cycle. And elections that that might be happening. So that's certainly a consideration. So I'm gonna come back. And I'm gonna share the screen.
Laura, this is off topic a little for tonight, but at some point, maybe before the legislative session, could we hear more on the. Very significant impact that our budget hit would be if the food sales taxes. Gotten rid of, because I I think that will come up again this year and, you know, having some. Talking points around that might be helpful.
Yep, we can certainly look at that. Okay, so this is, this is a worksheet that you. See. Pretty frequently in the CIP. And one of the things that we've been working on is kind of building this out with a variety of different scenarios. So you can kind of very quickly get to a bottom line. And then that helps us kind of work backwards to a certain extent into some of the financing. So. We looked at, okay, if we were only doing. We wanted to try to get a sense of what is the total cost in the next five-year CIP, for example, of the cars projects that we have. Programmed and how does that compare? If we were to do only cars projects, what does that look like with those revenues? So the seven mills, the street sales tax. And the special highway, and then in this case reimbursements from cars. So you can see there's really no, there's a residential street program in these first two years. But then nothing from a residential street component again. And if you look here, you can see that we could. Basically cash flow, the cars projects that we have. And you would still have some available fund balance at the at the end of the year. Now, again, this doesn't account for. The Johnson Drive project. But the biggest project that you have in here from a dollar perspective is your Fox Ridge project at about. Six, little over six million dollars a year. So one of the things that we want to look at is can you do, you know, what what? Parts or pieces of this can you do on a pay-as-you-go basis versus a debt financing? So if we were to do no residential streets and focus on arterials. Over the next five years and not change anything in our revenue stream, other than renew the sales tax at a quarter cent, we could cash flow. The arterial projects that we have. Then we looked at. Same scenario, but what happens if we're only considering the residential street program? So this is kind of that split of arterials versus collectors, if you will. And if you look at that, then we've taken out. We've got this residential street maintenance program kind of plugged in at two million dollars a year and then. Uh, about another hundred thousand dollars for just more general maintenance programs. If you look at. That, so that's a quarter cent sales tax. That assumes we renew the quarter cent sales tax. And we do the cars project. So this is kind of all in with everything we've contemplated. You'll see pretty quickly that. You turn upside down by two thousand and twenty-two. And then you you never sort of recover with a positive ending fund balance. So, you know, this is, this is the cash flow. We obviously, and I think everybody knows this. You we couldn't cash flow. The two million dollar residential and our cars. If we look at two million dollar residential quarter cent sales tax with no cars. Kind of same scenario, you can generally, we could generally cash flow that residential program. Over the course of. The next five years, hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar shortfall at the end of that five-year period. Then, so so really, I mean, it kind of just illustrated clearly that which we already knew, and that was we. We likely need to pursue some combination of debt financing and. Pay as you go in order to be able to accomplish this. The other thing that that I wanted to take a look at, so if you look at. Two million res- residential. If and so let's look at. So this was the two million dollar residential quarter quarter cent with the cars projects. So basically, by the end of that, we're kind of upside down by about four point six million. So then I looked at what happens if we actually increase that. And we flip-flop. So what if we renew potentially the street sales tax at three eights of a cent versus that quarter cent? And you can see in that instance, we make some forward progress. But we still even just increasing a sales tax rate doesn't get us. Much closer to being able to balance out those projects that we've anticipated. In the next five years. But basically, you know, we've built these these models for a a variety of different scenarios, and we can kind of start to look at. You know, if what happens when we adjust sales tax? What happens when? Were if we were to consider dedicating additional mills? And some of those kinds of things. So I'm gonna stop sharing. This one. We'll go back to the presentation.
Could I could I ask a question, Laura? So it it appears we can either cash fund cars or we can cash fund residential. Or you can do a hybrid. But if you want to make significant progress, we're gonna need more funding. And I know you're gonna go through options on that. Whether it be even even the the sales tax increase that you were talking about does not significantly. A dent that number. But you also keep talking about, this does not include the. The Johnson Drive improvement. A twelve million dollar project. So I I understand what you're doing, how you're constructing this to give us a good vision of what the situation is. But when when do we throw the twelve million dollar project? What what is our thought? On that?
Celia, do you want to start that? Do you want me to start or?
You you want to talk about the stormwater component of it?
Yeah, I I mean, I think, let's tag team this a little bit. So the. Originally, the Johnson Drive project was sort of split into those two phases and. The phase from La Martinal was done with a variety of considerations to look at widening the sidewalks and. Making that that downtown, that true traditional downtown corridor more pedestrian friendly. It was also about two million dollars of that ten point eight million dollar project, ten point six million dollar project. Was to put a stormwater interceptor underneath that street. So it would collect water. From, because as we've seen in some of our stormwater inventory, there are very few stormwater structures, particularly north of Johnson Drive. So it was, it was picking up money. Diverting that. Stormwater runoff before it got into the open channel that runs behind many of those businesses. So it was intercepting it and connecting it further downstream to help kind of balance the load and potentially alleviate flooding in. In the downtown area. So stormwater, the the entire street and the, you know, big stormwater interceptor boxes that were put in. The utility, complete sort of utility replacement and relocation that occurred with that project was a huge driver of costs. And so. You know, looking at the next phase of that. You know, we've now lived with. What, ten plus years of that Johnson Drive interceptor being included as a part of. That La Martinal project. I think one of the things that we've been talking about is what what is the right treatment for that street? Right? So the twelve million dollar project is is based on an assumption that. That stormwater interceptor pipe would be, those boxes would be continued, basically the remaining length of Johnson Drive. I think part of what I know Celia and I have been looking at is, is is that truly? An important investment at at this time. I mean, what have we seen in terms of flooding and or capacity in the creek channels? And and do we see a significant return on investment? By dropping another, you know, two plus million dollars worth of. Funds into that project to to put the stormwater interceptor in. So I think, Celia, I know you've had some other thoughts about. You know, maybe even some interim. Work on that section of the road as we evaluate and develop a longer term plan. The other, I think, concern that we have is. You know, we've built budgets, assuming, I think, one and a half million in car reimbursement and. Two million in SMAC reimbursement or something close to that. And whether realistically, we think we could actually secure that. So really trying to get a much better handle on. How much in terms of outside funds can we leverage to accomplish that project?
So I took a look at it and, you know, I, we are, we were starting to apply for STP funds, and I think that we would be eligible for that. But that requires, you know, we were gonna do widening sidewalks and making, I mean, we need to do ADA no matter what, but widening sidewalks. Putting in trees, putting under the stormwater interceptor and kind of making it more of a pedestrian-friendly corridor. And that's really expensive, and we could probably get some STP funding, and we could probably get some cars funding. I don't know that we're really eligible for SMAC funding right now. So it's this great big price tag. So, you know, the pavement is in poor condition. And needs repair. So, you know, do we, do we fix the ADA and we fix the pavement? And forego the stormwater so we can afford it? Do we apply for the STP funding? I mean, when I was looking at the stormwater interceptor at first, I'm like, this is what's really causing us to increase the project and. Reading all the old documents, it says, you know, to prevent flooding down in the creek. And I I said, well, I don't see any flooding. So do we really need to do that? But look, and I need to dig into it more, but looking at all the stormwater. Right now, it all drains north down to Johnson Drive. And then there's. This crazy stormwater system that kind of goes everywhere, and the pipes are in really poor condition. And it looks like there may be some that drain under buildings. Or drain through parking lots. And so if we don't put the interceptor underneath the street, you know, we need to look at. A stormwater system, you know, to fix that eventually. Do we have to do that right now? And so I think that's kind of looking at, you know. What are our options here to try to get the Johnson Drive project? And what is our? Vision for that corridor, you know, and so I think those are a lot of considerations that we need to take a look at.
Well, I think, and the other thing is that the SMAC considerations, the the. SMAC application process has changed. Since we applied for and received SMAC funds on the first phase of the Johnson Drive, you know, the Johnson Drive project and that interceptor. And so previously, we actually. Were blocked and Councilmember Kring will remember this, we were blocked from getting SMAC funds for that. Portion of the Johnson Drive rehabilitation, because the city of Fairway objected to. That and were concerned that we were going to be increasing the flow of water into their community. So at that, at that time, you had to have sign off by a downstream community. In order for SMAC to approve your project. And we were unable to secure that with Johnson Drive. So we got no SMAC dollars that came into the Johnson Drive project. So if you really look at and go back and break down kind of the existing street debt that we have. Really, that's almost exclusively tied to the various cars projects that we've had in the last ten years, whether that's Mart Way or Johnson Drive.
I guess. Sorry.
No, and so so the process now is you have to, you have to do, SMAC is funding on a watershed basis. So we would have to go back in order to even qualify for SMAC funding on that next phase. We would have to go through. A different, a now stormwater review and analysis process to to see if we would even be eligible to submit. For SMAC funding on that. And so I think, again, some of the improvements that we've now made downstream. Have impacted probably our ability to secure the level of funding that was once anticipated for that. Section of Johnson Drive.
And just to add really quick before Sully, sorry to jump in, but I talked to SMAC and. They indicated it was unlikely that we would get SMAC funding for that project. So anyway, sorry.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say to the mayor's point, do we have a sense of when we'll have more staff recommendations? On options for that project? Because I agree, having, you know, whether it's a ten million dollar project or a twelve million dollar project. That's a pretty big hole in understanding the complete picture, you know, as we try to cement the ten-year plan.
You know, I would really need to, I couldn't find the whole report on the stormwater. So I think I really need to dig into that and really understand it. And I may need to get a consultant involved to get into the stormwater, because I don't want to make a recommendation. Of not doing that, and then it comes out. But, you know, we could, we could be working on that.
Well, and I think, I feel like that we are far enough along in the kind of build out of. The residential side of the program and a lot of the other pieces. That that's kind of the the last piece of the the puzzle in terms of what needs to happen on that street and when. And how does that fit in? So I I feel like that's the next logical step as we move, you know, forward in the next. Few weeks and or months about putting that together. Is that a fair assessment, Celia?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question. On on the Johnson Drive.
On, on the Johnson Drive, if we were to do something similar to what you did with Lamar as opposed to doing the uh stormwater, because that was very disruptive for businesses and so forth when it was done between Lamar and Noll. So if there's not a good justification for doing the stormwater at this point and doing all the utility relocations, it might be better to look at just doing the, the uh surface repair and, and the ADA from Lamar to Metcalf. And especially if you don't expect SMAC funding for this and it's not a, a real immediate problem um to, to not do that this time around.
And, and that's definitely an option and we just need to look at, so what would be our stormwater repairs to the other system? When would it be due? You know, just to make sure that we're not, you know, um, missing out on something. But yeah, we could definitely fix the pavement and kind of get that in at least decent condition while we're taking a look at what we do for stormwater. So I, I think that's part of the whole evaluation and, and one good option to consider.
Okay, let me. Well, that it's, Councilmember Thomas shared a, the Roland Park had, had a nice city sales tax rate comparison. But it's really small. So I'll share that link when, when we're finished. Um, I just looked at it to see if I could pull it up and it doesn't look, it doesn't look great. So thank you, Hillary, for sharing that and um we'll just plagiarize Roland Park's work and share that with you all. Um, and apparently I think the City of Leewood has a sales tax question on the ballot as well and they've done absolutely no information, oh, campaign. Um, in fact, Roland Park City Administrator, who lives in Leewood, said he went to vote and he didn't even realize nor could he find any information. They just put it on the ballot and hope you're going to vote yes for it. So a variety of, of different strategies, obviously. Um, let me go back here to kind of the presentation. Maybe. Okay, so the other thing that we kind of looked at, and I knew, I know the spreadsheets are a little um sort of cumbersome, but I wanted to just kind of show you that, again, we're continuing to try to build out um some models. And I think at least for us, from our perspective, it was helpful to kind of see the arterials again. We're so used to seeing them blended, but it was, it was helpful to kind of see what those costs are. Um, what we've started to look at and, and kind of have conversations around uh preliminarily with, with elders that I wanted to share this evening. And then we could kind of talk about maybe some, um, you know, maybe a couple of different, more specific scenarios that going forward from tonight, we can build out in, in a little more detail. But one of the things that we looked at was, okay, so we know we can't cash flow both. And so where or when or how would it make sense potentially for us to look at? Excuse me, some bonding or debt scenarios. Number one, to address the cash flow issue. And number two, to then see if we can accelerate uh and move um larger pieces and parts of the street program forward. So what, what we asked elders to just sort of prepare is this really sort of high level look at this point to say, okay, if you had, so in the yellow column is what is our annual sales tax revenue that would be available for debt service? And I think you can eliminate the word sales tax here if you wanted. So if you have this amount of revenue available for debt service annually, then the blue box is looking at a variety of different bond terms. So if we issued debt over a ten year period, a fifteen year period or a twenty year period, um, the green box is then going to tell us what the estimated net proceeds of bonds. So what, if, if you issue bonds, the numbers in the green are what you're going to have in the bank that would allow you to construct projects um at that time. So you can see, um, you know, let's generally start at the bottom of the revenue side with half a million dollars. And so if you remember back from our chart, we're generating, that quarter cent's going to generate um a little bit more than that five hundred thousand dollars. Um, one of the other things that, that we'll want to revisit is currently in our, in the city's debt policy, um, it is a goal, it's not, it's not a requirement, but we generally try to bond for ten years or less. Um, that's something that you certainly want to tie to the potential useful life of an asset and on a street. Um, I think you could realistically consider bonds that, that extend beyond that ten year period. But the other thing to think about there too is particularly if you've tied the debt service to a, a revenue stream like a sales tax that has a sunset, you, you don't want to, you know, take on debt for a longer period of time than you've got your guaranteed revenue stream for. So if you think about, um, you know, the, the ten year, if you think back to the CIP worksheets and kind of remember at the end of five years, we were upside down in the one um by about four point six million dollars. So if you looked at um what, what renewing the sales tax at its current rate and, and issuing debt for a ten year period of time, dedicating that sales tax revenue to debt service, we could come up with about four point five million dollars um it, you know, in money. And so I think what that tells you is we could essentially do what we've laid out for you in that two million dollar a year residential street program and the cars projects that we've identified. But we're not going to accelerate the program really any faster than that or take on any additional streets. And so you can kind of see as you go across, um, you know, if you went to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so a three eighths cent is generating um closer to about eight hundred. So that's going to be, really, you could kind of look at these and generally line up the gold columns as a quarter cent, three eighths cent, and then a half cent would generate roughly a million dollars a year for you. Um, and you can just kind of start to see incrementally what, what the difference in net bond proceeds that would be available to you. So if you renewed the street sales tax, for example, at three eighths of a cent versus the quarter cent that we currently have, which we do have the capacity for, um, on a ten year note, you would be, um, we would be providing six point eight million dollars in um net bond proceeds. So I won't go through, I mean, does anybody have any questions about this? Does this sort of make sense?
Laura, would all of these be reasonable with where we're at on our total debt? Are there any concerns, you know, if we get up to that uh highest box on that?
Part of that, part of that's, I think, w- we can certainly run those numbers and I have not run the um that, how this impacts our, you know, where we stand in relationship to the statutory debt uh limit. Um, and any debt that we would issue for streets uh would be um would count towards that limit. So you may recall that stormwater debt is exempted by the state from that statutory debt limit. But we have always tried to keep an eye and keep all of that debt in balance, um, whether it is you know, whether, whether it is um statutorily counting toward that debt limit or not. The other, the other thing, and I don't think, let me go back and look at one thing quickly because the other thing you have to remember is we sort of have um paid off all of our debt, essentially with the exception of some stormwater debt is expiring i- in this twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three time period. So we tied existing street debt and um existing um stormwater debt, stormwater debt extends a little bit beyond that. And my, I'm sorry, my spreadsheet doesn't show it. If we go to the budget book, we kind of show what debt's remaining after the life of that five year CIP. And so I can pull those, you know, kind of pull those numbers together um for you as well.
Laura, do you have any way whatsoever, even hypothetically, of projecting a five year window of what sales tax might look like if the gateway is up and going?
Um, yeah, well, no, not a good one anymore. Um, you know, at one point, but we can do that. I mean, those are numbers that we, that we can run. At one point, uh, I think we were estimating that at a quarter cent, the gateway was going to generate maybe another three to four hundred thousand dollars annually in sales tax revenue. But again, I think, uh, you know, with where we are on the project and potentially the long term sales tax generators and, you know, in the project, um synergy was obviously the largest sales tax generator uh on the site. So I think it's um probably prudent to really build out models that don't count on um, you know, that additional sales tax. Uh, but then realize that if we do have a project that comes along, um, that generates that, we can certainly, um, you know, accelerate or, I mean, and that's, that's the benefit of having the ten year or ten year plus program built out and designing a year or two ahead as you start to realize those additional revenues or excess revenues, you sort of always have a project in the pipeline that you can, you know, you can move up and, and move move back as, as necessary. Um, you, you know, the other thing, and we, we didn't really talk about it. So right now, we're currently dedicating the seven mills, well, seven mills uh of the property tax to streets. So, you know, additional property tax mills is certainly uh an option. Um, right now, I think it would be safe to say that a mill is going to generate somewhere in the neighborhood of about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. You know, for you. And obviously that, those are revenues that are paid exclusively by mission, you know, residents and mission businesses. Um, none of that, none of that burden would be supported by um visitors to, you know, to our community.
Laura, I have a question.
Uh huh.
As we look at potentially bonding options, and, and this is a little dense for me. So if my question isn't totally clear, I apologize. But looking at, say, ten years for, you know, the nine point one million dollars, I'm, I'm curious you know, how, or maybe this is something that you guys are still talking about, but, you know, how those dollars would be used, you know, cars versus, you know, taking a big chunk out of residential? And if there's, you know, what the pros and cons of either or would be? Is it more beneficial to, you know, use a good chunk of that to, you know, get a, a, a good amount of the residential street out of the way earlier on than, say, over the course of ten years? And, and again, if I'm, if I'm misunderstanding, you know, how, I, I'm curious how, you know, how it would play out? If, if I'm making sense with my question, I guess I'm.
No, absolutely, it absolutely makes sense. And it's, um, there's not one specific answer to that. And let me try to explain that a little, a little bit better. So y- you have, when we issue debt, we, we, you don't want to issue debt and then sit on debt proceeds for an extended period of time or you end up um potentially having, you have arbitrage issues because um they don't like you to sit on the money and earn interest on those bond proceeds. So um what, what I think we would have to look at is if that was the scenario that we were building out, we would, we would go into a lot more detail in saying, is that one bond issue? Is that multiple bond issues over the course of a ten year period? So you could break this out into, you know, two, three, whatever might make sense. So I think you would have some options. So I think you could have the, the opportunity to say, you know, let's build out kind of that spreadsheet and see where we have cash short flows that are probably going to be driven by the larger cars projects. And so how do we have money available to fund that? And what's the best way? Is that a, the, the debt, a debt issuance? Is that um, or is that u- using debt to accelerate a portion of the residential street program? And then sort of saving up money to do, so you can cash flow your Johnson, you know, not Johnson Drive, but a cars project? So I think that, that just based on the size and scope of our probably staff and contractor and, and resident capacity, I think a nine million dollar, like, we would never go do a nine million dollar program um because we'd have the whole city torn up and it would be, you know, it would be really, 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 really crazy. And so I think of that, you know, what, what we want to do is I think sort of gear ourselves to something, you know, maybe a target zone. And then we have to, to really kind of roll up our sleeves and say, okay, now, based on those projects, what options do we have? Do we want to, again, accelerate a portion of the street project? Or do we want to use debt for cars projects? Um, and, and we would just have to kind of step through that um a piece at a time to figure out what, what would make the most sense. So is that any, that any less confusing than the question probably?
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I, I think that provides clarity for me. I think it's just, um, you know, just processing what that would look like is, is a lot. So I appreciate it.
Laura.
Yes.
What if we were to go ahead and try to get a fifty cent street sales tax? And then i- instead of going just partially, ju- rather than just renew, go with a fifty percent of sales tax rate and try to generate twice as much of what we're doing now in order for us to actually tackle the residential on top of it?
Um, yeah, I think that's, that's certainly, if that's something that we, you know, part of that is what is, what, what do we think our appetite would be to go to that full, you know, additional, additional half cent? And I think that chart, um.
Laura, do we have the capacity, like you were saying, could we even do that or can we only?
We do, we have, um, we have, we do have the capacity to do that. The question would be, um, let's see. You'd still, so right, so our capacity is, our capacity is um two percent. Well, it's one percent basically on a special sales tax, right?
But, but there's also a capacity from staff. I mean, I think, maybe where Sully's coming from is there's only so many projects you can get done with our staff. So even if we had the money, ha- having extra money doesn't help us sometimes uh as far as trying to get to work them.
Well, my thought is, I mean, i- if you're going to run out, y- you have to renew the sales tax twenty twenty-two. If you renew it at fifty cents, and then you also have to renew the parking wrecks. And, and the idea is, are we going to request the same amount in the parking wrecks in twenty twenty-three for the sales tax? Or is, do we anticipate reducing the parking wreck sales tax?
Well, I think that's part of the conversation. So right now, between parks and streets, we've got, you know, basically point six two five um percent of, of sales tax. Um, so if you divide that up, you know, do, do we want to stay at the same sales tax rate? Do we think we have? And I think that chart will be helpful and looking, I mean, I will tell you, we're on the higher end of cities in Johnson County with our just kind of base sales tax rate. So the question is, how, you know, even if you just look at our immediate neighbors in Roland Park and Merriam and, and the numbers that we talked about earlier at nine point two two five and nine point four seven five, you know, that we're already above that. So the question is, you know, for a short period of time, I think it would be reasonable to think we could potentially, um, you know, bump up a little bit higher if we laid out that long term plan. But I would think we may want to um be more coordinated than in communicating with the public if, if we knew or had some sense about, you know, kind of bear with us, if you will, through this short, shorter period of time because we're going to bring the protection recreation sales tax down. protection recreation sales tax down, or what whatever we decide to do, I think there's some of those kinds of considerations. And I'm, you know, just interested in, obviously, we're not making any decisions tonight. We're just sort of brainstorming and thinking so we can continue to build out the scenarios. But what's what's kind of the general thought or appetite around, you know, threshold rates for sales tax, if you will?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a balance between, obviously, it's a good thing that it involves non-residents, but sales tax is also regressive by nature. And so I think balancing, you know, I think maybe considering the three eights since sales tax, but I'd rather see a three eight cents sales tax and a one mil no levy increase rather than going to a fifty cent sales tax. Personally, I think keeping your revenue sources more balanced makes sense. We're already very sales tax dependent, and so I think keeping it more balanced would be good.
Others?
I agree with Sally's point, but thinking long term about parks, I really don't want to see us considering, you know, cutting our parks funding to balance our streets. I think both departments need equal attention.
Yeah, I definitely agree there. I think we want to try to, try to keep a good balance in those rates and I wouldn't want to take away from parks to be able to handle the streets, but I think streets need the attention and maybe some sort of a, you know, combined approach between sales tax and potential levy or, you know, something else.
I would also ask that we take consideration into the fact that we're going through a pandemic right now and several small businesses are barely holding on. And I I would not want to see them go out of business if if we increase the sales tax too much either.
The other thing that that I wanted to throw out, and if you had the opportunity to kind of look at the Miriam question and Roland Parks question, you know, there there's an, Roland Parks was more generally categorized as infrastructure, so spread across streets, stormwater, parks and recreation, you know, other public facility type things. Miriam's was dedicated for streets and stormwater. Internally, I will tell you that the conversations that we've had, we, we would recommend from a staff perspective, probably continuing dedicated sales taxes as opposed to trying to broaden something. Right? And I I think it gets, it can get squishy over time in terms of trying to put together plans. And I think one of the things that's been very effective for us in in communicating with residents in the past is being able to show those, you know, dedicated, transparent revenue streams that have kind of that accountability built in inherently with the sales tax issue. But I didn't know if the council had any thoughts about dedicated versus more, more broad, more broad special purpose, if that makes sense.
Well, I think dedicated is fine. The problem is that we said that we were dedicating the mills, the seven mills, and the core set sales tax to streets, and we haven't really applied it to residential streets. So to me, that's, that's where the rub is, that we've seen a lot of dedication to the arterials, but not to the residences. So if we're actually going out and arguing that this is for residential streets, then somehow we need to make sure that that's dedicated for that.
Well, and and I I hear and understand what you're saying. I think, though, that it's important to remember that this, in addition to the arterial streets, these streets have been touched, you know, every street that's colored on this map that we were looking at before in a residential neighborhood has been touched in in this last ten year program in some fashion. So, you know, that's, I think, an important part, because I know some of the reaction last last work session was, oh, my gosh, it's going to be decades before some of these folks have their, you know, have their streets touched. And that's why we wanted to go back and say, well, that could be true, and that's probably true in most cities, long term, you know, street maintenance programs. But their streets have been touched at, it hasn't been decades since their street was touched previously, right? And so, but I I hear and understand what you're saying. I think, yes, some of the larger projects, and I think quite honestly, that's part of our concern as we look at that twelve plus million dollar Johnson Drive project is that creates a real, you know, imbalance, if you will. Again, with, you know, money going toward arterial streets versus our residential streets.
Laura, when you share the comparative sales tax rates, you know, if if others on council, it sounds like some are at least open to also exploring, you know, and an additional dedicated mill, could we also get a comparison of sort of the Northeast Johnson County mill rates? I know it's not apples to apples, but even if it means you have to asterisk one and say theirs includes something, you know, ours doesn't, I think that would be helpful, too. You know, just sort of building the case for our mill levy has been historically super low, and that's part of why we're stuck where we are, I think.
Right.
So looking at some of those numbers would be helpful, too.
Okay.
Yeah, I like that approach, too, and I'm also in favor of exploring kind of the three eighth cent option and maybe not going directly up to the fifty cent option yet, but sort of form of an incremental bump there makes more sense.
Laura, I have a a follow up question to my earlier question and some of the other thoughts that have been shared regarding staff capacity. When I think about, or when we talk about, you know, two million dollars per year for residential, two million for cars, is that staff, is that staff's, you know, I know that's your recommendation right now, but is that staff's capacity? Like, is that the the most that we can undertake and is, you know, kind of setting the framework as we think about these scenarios for financing?
Celia probably can answer that a little bit better. I I think, no, I would say, no, it's not necessarily our capacity. But I don't know what that is exactly, right?
We haven't defined, that wasn't what those numbers were based on. And we'd really have to look at it. I mean, right, to be honest, right now, Brent and I are really busy trying to keep up with everything, and so we've often talked, and I'm not trying to plug in for more people. But we've also often talked about, you know, if we get this street program and we need to do right away inspection and pro- project management, you know, are we able to handle this, or are we gonna need more people? But I don't, you know, I would definitely be willing to try to, you know, see what we can do and try to up it more so we can get more work done. And we're just gonna have to really take a look at that and see, you know, what we can do. And I think if we have a plan and it's, we're working the plan all year and we know what projects we're gonna be doing, I mean, that's gonna make it a lot easier for us to be able to handle it.
Thank you. That that's helpful. You know, I can't, I can only speak for myself, but, you know, I have an appetite to take a bit, as I know we all do. But if the numbers make sense and we're looking at, you know, financing, I have an appetite for, you know, taking a bigger chunk out of streets early on, especially when I think about, you know, you know, looking at our streets as an asset depreciating over, you know, the next ten years. I I think it would make sense for us to, you know, dig in a little bit more upfront. And I just, just thoughts there from my perspective.
Well, and I think, too, I mean, I think that, like, like Celia said, if you have a plan and we can kind of lay that out, I think there are options. I think you could potentially look at even a contract, you know, you, you could look at a contractual position, for example, to increase that capacity tied to the specific implementation of your plan as opposed to taking on a full time position and then feel, you know, so I I think there are some ways that and opportunities that you could explore there. If you could really very clearly go and say, you know, here's, here's what you're gonna tackle in the next three years and, you know, that this is the, this is the price that we're gonna pay for that.
We're definitely willing to, you know, do whatever we can to get more streets done. So we're open to that. And I, like I said, having a plan, I think, is gonna make a big difference. So we just know what we gotta get done all year and, you know, we work towards that every year.
Okay, so kind of next steps, and then we can certainly talk a few more follow up questions about some funding scenarios. So we need to continue, obviously, to refine and develop the street priorities for the ten year program. Think specifically, we need to come back with you and and provide some more detail and clarity around those twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two projects so that hopefully we can, you know, get you comfortable with allowing us to proceed with design so we can be out in the neighborhoods and working on our streets. Kind of, again, then refining and developing the budget and financing options and scenarios. I've, I, we can certainly build out, I think I'm hearing. And maybe what we do is I'll build out the quarter cent, so if we renewed at the same rate, plus an additional mill, and then renewed at three eights of a cent, plus an additional mill, and kind of be able to get much more sort of detailed around than, you know, what that might allow us to do and and what we might, you know, what we might want to look at. You know, you're gonna be, if you went to three eights, assuming that sales tax continues to maintain and grow over time, over the next ten years. You know, you you will, through that three eight cent and a and a mill, generate that additional million dollars. You know, that you would, that you would have been looking at. So I think then we want to think about discussing and developing kind of public education and input process, including questions that we might want to test through the Direction Finder survey. So I know s- some of you have asked me, you know, when, when will we have the opportunity to look at the Direction Finder survey and provide input on the questions? Brian Scott had been following up with the folks at ETC. And so I wanted to share tonight just a little bit more information about that process and what we would sort of recommend about how to move some of that forward. So Direction Finder, as you know, is a tool that ETC built, and they use it across the country. And it's, it's really nice for benchmarking because you can not only look at changes in your own organization over time, but you can compare yourself to cities in the metro and then other peer cities. The, I think what we've learned in our conversations with Direction Finder is that the magic of the the Direction Finder survey is they won't do a survey that's more than seven pages in length. So what that does is, you know, we have a little bit, it limits our ability a little bit to add our own questions. But they also, we also have the opportunity to go back and remove some of the standard questions and kind of create some capacity if there are more specific questions that we want to test through that, you know, statistically valid survey process. So one of the things that we've been talking about as a leadership team is going back and 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 everybody has been tasked with kind of going back to their own program areas and evaluating the questions to to kind of come up with. Which questions do they think would be valuable going forward to maintain? We obviously want to maintain enough that that the benchmarking makes sense for us, and we we don't lose that, you you know, that benefit or that ability. But I would propose sending that twenty fifteen Direction Finder survey out to you all as a council and sort of asking you to go through that same exercise. Because obviously, what what we'd like to do then is sort of marry up, you know, where do we have overlap, or, you know, how, where are the department heads seeing the important data that they would like to collect through that process from a management perspective? And then how does that align with the, you know, the metrics or the information that you would like to see as a council? So I think that will be helpful in in advancing us forward if we can just sort of go in and clean up and and clean out some of the questions that we may not be interested, you know, in tracking over time and create that capacity for, you know, more questions around, you know, tolerance for funding increases or other things as as we may want to advance some of those ballot questions. So does that, you know, but I obviously, if you, if you are willing and able to participate in that process, I can, you know, kind of get that out and and then we can come back once I have results from you all and kind of the feedback from the leadership team and have a conversation about where those intersections are occurring.
I think that sounds like a good idea. To what degree is Crux gonna be part of this educational or the PR component of it?
Well, I'm, I think that's gonna be somewhat dependent on the next question. So we also then need to really develop kind of a specific timeline and our preferred method for renewal of the sales tax. So is that, you know, mail ballot, do we want to to align with a election? And part of that's gonna, going to depend on if we renew with Crux a contract going forward and and, you know, what level of service we might anticipate. This is certainly something that we we could consider, but I would envision that they would help us , you know, build out communication materials and, you know, develop kind of a consistent look and feel for some of those kinds of things. You know, we, we still are gonna be the content experts, but they can, you know, they, they, I think, are doing a really nice job of taking our content and then putting it in, you know, some different formats and and things like that. So I think it's just gonna kind of depend on what we envision and what timeline and how that aligns with a potential Crux contract renewal.
I have a quick question related to that, related to the public input piece. And Celia, tell me, I know this might sound totally nuts, but I I've, I've wondered, has there ever been thought of like a thirty year street program? I know even just like the ten year design seems extreme, but just thinking about the shelf life of a, of a street. And and maybe it's not the, you know, deep work that I know you, you all have been doing for the ten years, but I'm thinking about, you know, when we go to the public and, you know, sh- share the street program that I I know that I've personally been sharing with people for the past three years, that is, you know, on its way, right? But then they, you know, look at it in whatever way that we decide to showcase it. And they see they're not anywhere on there in the next ten years. And I'm just wondering, you know, obviously, we'll need, you know, some talking points around that and and why it's still a good sell. But if even some of, even if we could just place them, you know, for, you know, the next ten years and the next ten years, I I I I I know I don't understand these things the way that you do, but that's just some of my thoughts and concerns as we think about the input and and selling it and this program in general.
I've never, you know, a thirty year scenario would be very iffy, but I mean, we could definitely take a look at, you know, trying to make sure every street is touched and how to show that scenario. I don't know to what extent we'd be building on. I mean, if we definitely don't get a street done in this ten years, we're gonna get it done in the next ten years. And ideally, once we get this big glut of, you know, full depth reconstruction done, then it's gonna be a lot easier. But we could, I, let me put some thought to trying to show, you know, these other streets, and it's just gonna be, some of the other stuff's really gonna be iffy. But let me, let me try to think through that and to see to what level we can do that.
And I'm not saying let's make a thirty year, I'm, maybe it's a m- manner of semantics and, you know, it's phase one, phase two, phase thirty kind of thing. Just thinking about how to, you know, how how to share it with folks in a way that they, they are able to see how they'll be impacted positively.
Okay.
Well, and I think the other thing, too, is we can go and build out, if you think back to, there was a slide in a, one of the previous presentations. I mean, once we get through, as Celia mentioned, kind of this backlog of the full depth reconstructions, then ideally, we're gonna move to a cycle, and you may remember a chart that kind of talks about, you know, here's the point that you crack seal, here's the point that you come back and do some, you know, other sort of intermediate. And and so if we can in- incorporate that in 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 some fashion and start to build out that this is the consistent now, you know, you could anticipate to see something happening on your street every, what, five to eight years, probably, right? But we can put a lot of better definition around that, but.
Going back to your question about the ballot or the, putting it on a regular election, I thought that the election was going to be cutting it tight because isn't that next November?
Well, yeah, I think we have to look at the election calendar for 2021. I mean, I think, I think that, I mean, just from a preference standpoint, I think that my recommendation is probably going to always be a mail ballot for something like this.
Yeah, that's.
The communication, you know, I, I know there's a cost associated with that. But again, oftentimes it, it allows you to have kind of that much more focused communication plan around the issue that you're dealing with and you don't get lost on, you know, I think about just the, the noise, if you will, that is occurring on an November 3rd ballot and thinking about Roland Park having this critical, you know, sales tax issue caught up in the midst, in the midst of all of that. That's always been sort of the, the more overarching concern about, you know, tacking it onto a ballot in some other fashion is that do you, do you diminish some of your ability to really have that effective focused communication about what you intend to do with, with the resources that you're asking for?
Yeah, I, I would tend to agree with that. That's why I was thinking it might be better for us to go ahead and plan on a ballot, a mail ballot and, and look at the timing of that.
Yeah, well, I can build out, you know, I, I know we had talked generally about trying to do something in the first quarter of, you know, first quarter of, or early in 2021, if at all possible. Because what that does is it can also then inform our budget decision, you know, as we go through the budget process next, next summer. So I think that would be my goal, but I can certainly, you know, that's, that's a next step for me is really building out a, a specific recommendation on a calendar.
And Laura, when you think on that, I get your point about Q1 timing, but maybe also think about COVID winter and where people's like minds are going to be at, you know, come January. Just something to think about.
That's true. We have a tough winter though, that those puddles will reappear and everybody will want their streets fixed, right? Yeah, I think, and I think part of that is going to be too, just timing of, you know, if we are going to tie some questions related to this in, in the Direction Finder survey, just getting, there, just a lot of moving parts and pieces that we want to coordinate to kind of get this done effectively. But I feel like we're getting really close on, you know, having the plan, at least fundamentally, we, as we've talked about, maybe building it out a little bit further and with some more level of detail. But I think fundamentally, that plan is, is kind of forming and shaping up really well.
But the ballot, the ballot would go out like in April, is that what you're thinking?
I, really, I think you can do it, I think you're kind of in control of that timing. I know we've done a, one of the sales tax elections we did in like December one year. So I'll, I'll turn my attention to kind of getting more specific about ballot and election calendars. Okay, and so our thought was probably our next work session, as we get into the latter November, obviously, we're going to bump up against the Thanksgiving holiday. And so our work session, typical work session date would be right, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, which is never a good option. And so I'll communicate with you all, because I know we've got, got a lot coming at us on the November committee agendas, and then I know we've committed to kind of coming back and I want to find a time for a work session, a little deeper dive in kind of budget and that analysis particularly of community center revenues. So I think maybe we might target coming back in December committee meetings. So we're early December, not, you know, not waiting till the end, but we need to kind of look at the calendars and coordinate some of that. Does that seem reasonable for everyone?
Sounds good, that would be on the second, you mean?
Yes. Now typically, and I was thinking about this the other day, typically, we have to move that December committee meeting because of the Johnson Wyandotte County Council of Mayors Holiday Party, but I'm guessing that's not going to be a thing in 2020. So we may be able to sort of keep our regular committee meeting dates.
So one thing I was just thinking about on the, we'll call it the 30-year scenario, but if I knew that we're going with the $2 million option, I can build that out. If I know that we're going to go, we may want to look at some other scenarios. I don't know if we should wait a little bit or, I was just thinking about loud, you know, because obviously, if we have bonding, we have more money and I can get streets touched faster. So I don't know, Laura, if you and I want to just talk about that to try to figure out how best to do that.
Yes, we can absolutely.
Okay.
Touch base on that and keep it moving forward.
Yeah, okay, thank you, sorry.
That's okay. All right, any other questions, thoughts, comments before we wrap up for this evening?
Just thank you very much for all the work. It's really, we understand, it's a lot of work to prepare for these meetings and on top of everything else. So thank you very much.
You're welcome, I think we're all as anxious as you are to get something put together and get it out and start working the plan, right? That's always the, the best part.
Great article in the Shawnee Mission Post today about the food bank giving city credit, looks really good.
Thank you. We don't have much to do with it, but we're support, certainly supportive of those efforts. And just a reminder that we do have the Harvester's Mobile Collection on Saturday at Shawnee Mission North. It'll be our last one of 2020.
Thanks, Celia and Laura, thank you.
You're welcome, all right, thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Thanks.